At seven o'clock, we will call the regular common council meeting of the city of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Oberstadt.
Oberstadt is absent.
Johnson.
Present.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
McComb.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Absent.
And you heard from neither Oberstadt nor Morrow?
I have heard from neither Oberstadt or Morrow.
Okay. Have any of the other department heads heard from either of those Alders? Okay, then we'll have to mark those as absent. Clerk, can you borrow your agenda? I left mine down at the bottom. We'll get it in a second. All right, so number three, I'm sorry, number two, salute to the flag and the mayor's opening remarks. Would you please join me in our salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will keep my remarks short because I think we have a lot of discussion that's going to happen this evening. And by short, I mean tomorrow is a primary election here in Portage County. The school district has some candidates and District Nine has some candidates. Please get out and vote. Moving on to item number three, persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an agenda item that is not a public hearing, that has not filled out one of these slips? Okay, and I'll get to you, Alder, in just a second. Okay? All righty. Then we will move on to persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. Alder, we will let you go with that.
Well, I just wanted to mention that Central Rivers Farm Shed is having a beekeeping workshop on Saturday, March 2nd, from 9 until 3. The cost, I think, is 40 for members and 50 for non-members. It's at the, at their, the greenhouses on Briggs, and you have until the 23rd of February to register. And since we had so many interesting and appropriate comments last week at the Public Protection Committee regarding our beekeeping permit process, we want to make sure we get it right, so we aren't going to have anything to vote on tonight, but we'll be bringing something forward in March. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We also have for item number four, Brian Bolio.
Hello and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and citizens of Stevens Point. Many of you already know me. For those of you who don't, my name is Brian Bolio, and I'm a candidate for District Nine Alder. If you would have asked me a few years ago, I never would have thought I'd be seeking a position in a governmental role. At the insistence of many of my neighbors and citizens of Stevens Point, I decided to seek this very important role of District Alder. I've always felt the need to do some sort of public service, and this feels like the best way I can serve the community that has given me so much and is a place I call home. Since announcing my campaign in December, I have met so many great people in my district. I personally have walked every mile and knocked on every door in District Nine, which I estimate to be around 800 doors. I might need to get some new shoes after this. I felt this was the best way to get out and meet the people opting out of using other sources like postcards. Like our postal workers, I haven't let anything prevent me from getting out and reaching the residents. Whether it was a polar vortex, snow, sleet, or rain, even on days when I wasn't feeling great, I went out. I am clearly dedicated to pursuing the position of District Alder person. When I, when elected, I will give the same level of dedication to serving the constituents of District Nine throughout my term and possible future terms. As I've been going door to door, whether it's south of the tracks at Edgewater, on the west side, or within the central part of District Nine, I'm hearing the same resounding requests. The residents want some change in the city's direction, and most of all, they want to be heard. I stand here tonight and declare that I've heard them and to let them know that I want to be that change. I'm asking the residents of District Nine to vote for me in tomorrow's primary and give me the opportunity to win the general election in April, so I can be their district representative. I want to be a true voice for the citizens of not only District Nine, but the citizens of Stevens Point. Upon announcing my candidacy, I vowed to only lead a positive campaign, free of any negativity or mudslinging, to be a role model for future generations. The multiple letters of endorsement from community members speaks volumes of my character, level of commitment, and dedication. As unorthodox as it sounds, I even insisted on meeting with my opponents in Tubman Alder McComb and challenger Polly Dalton. We are three different candidates, each with different views and ideas for our city's future. I'm going into this with no personal agenda, unless you consider being a voice for your constituents and agenda, then I'm guilty of that. Since the position of District Alder is a nonpartisan position, I decided not to register with any political party, rather remain independent, so I can be inclusive to everyone, and not let any political affiliation affect decisions I would be making. When elected, I look forward to growing our city and attracting better-paying jobs in every area and new flourishing developments, while encouraging the use and renovation of existing vacant buildings for these developments. Being vigilant to keep our budget in check will be a key task, because this can be accomplished by applying logical, common sense approaches to keep both taxes and housing affordable. Prioritizing taking care of our more vulnerable citizens, mainly our seniors, the homeless, and those living in poverty should be an important focus that we have. Making efforts to include everyone in every decision the city makes can only make the city stronger, more resilient, more prosperous, and sustainable. Thank you for your time and the privilege to run as a candidate for District Nine Alder. I look forward to making Stevens Point better together.
Thank you. That exhausts the items for number four. And we have, item number five is, we had scheduled two presentations, one from the county, Porch County Emergency Management. One of those people were ill, so we decided to postpone that till next month. But we do have a presentation on our green tier legacy status. For those of you who are unfamiliar, we had been an eco municipality, and shortly after I got elected, we migrated to the new DNR program of green tier legacy communities. Alder Shore and McComb had been working on setting our benchmarks along with city staff, and this is going to be an update on where we are. Alder McComb, take it away.
Thank you. I'm giving a progress report on where we are with our...
I'm sorry, Alder, I'm going to need to interrupt you there.
Oh, I'm going to change the thing.
Can we get Alder Shore? Could you perhaps?
I'll do it.
Click.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. President Johnson, yeah, we just need to make sure we hear everybody in recording.
Okay. I'm Mary McComb, representing beautiful District Nine, and I'm giving a progress report on our green tier legacy community status. This is our page on the Green Tier website, and Melissa, if you would change the slide.
Okay. Oops. And...
Should we page up or page down?
All it wants to do is just do this.
You doing the down arrow or page down?
It's an outside thing. Put it there. Yeah. There. That makes more sense. Yay!
Just a brief history for people who, who need it. About 10 years ago, the mayor instituted something called a Stevens Point Eco-Municipality Task Force, and there's at least three people in here, possibly more, who worked on that project. It involved almost 100 people from all parts of the community, working together to draw up policies and goals for a sustainable city. The result was a 54-page report, and you can find that many places on the internet. After that, it sort of sat there on a shelf somewhere, and when Mayor Wiesa was elected, he wanted to bring sustainability back to the forefront in Stevens Point. And so some of us got talking, and Alder David Shore had been doing some research on sustainability as well, and he found the DNR's Green Tier Legacy Community Program. And after looking at that, we liked the flexibility of it, the systematic nature of, of the tracking and achievement, and I'll show you an example of that. It was more flexible and systematic than what we had previously been working on. And you can change the slide. The Green Tier Legacy Program has a score sheet, and it's, it's what we use to set goals and chart our progress. And it's very practical. It's designed for municipalities and governmental organizations. It has a number of goals on it. There is no rules about you have to choose these goals or those goals. Cities can adjust it to their own particular circumstances. Our membership in the Green Tier Program also includes lots of opportunities for peer-to-peer networking and for resources. And please change. This is just part of our most recent score sheet. These materials, if they're not up on the city website now, will be very, very shortly, and you'll be able to see the entire score sheet. Alder Shore and I found out in the research we did to put together our membership materials and our, and our progress reports, we found out that actually every department in the city is paying attention to sustainability. We are quite impressed with what, what the city is doing for sustainability. So we were happy because what, what this enables the city to do is pull it together in one place. Things have been happening, and you'll see, in different areas of city government, but this is a way to gather it in one place, so we can better track what's going on in terms of sustainability. And when we can track it and monitor it and make reports, it's more motivational to the people who are working on sustainability. So I'm going to just cover the highlights here, and if you'd change, Melissa. First of all, transportation. I think everybody here knows that we have given a lot of attention to roadways, to calming traffic, and to making roadways better for everybody. We have paid some attention to bicyclists. This is not only for sustainability, but also an effort to help residents improve their health, and it also definitely improves our economy. With the Green Circle Trail being so popular, this, this will augment that. So we have a roundabout that saves idling gas. We've got the four-to-three restriping of Stanley. We've got a bicycle, bicycle trail coming from District Nine down to Whiting. We have a permanent bicycle pedestrian street safety committee, commission, and we are working with Short, Elliott, and Hendrickson to plan the TAP grant. And there was a public gathering held this fall. There'll be another one this spring. The city and county also combined its transit operations, and this will lead to staff efficiencies, scheduling efficiencies, and better leverage for federal assistance. And we installed parking kiosks around the university. This helps us recover the street maintenance costs associated with parking, and again, encouraging better health through biking and walking. And change, please. Oops. The other way.
Yep. I'll go this way.
The sewer and water department, Alder Shore and I discovered, is a real star in terms of sustainability. So the very exciting thing happened within the last several months is, we have a 130-kilowatt solar installation on the roof, and there is a picture. You can't see it from the ground, I discovered trying to take a picture myself. Also, the final effluent water from wastewater treatment heats the garage via a heat pump. Also, our sewer operation produces an average 80% of its own electricity and 90% of its own heat. And continuing with water and waste, we've also got a current biosolids project going on, and when that is finished, we will produce our own version of malorganite, 98% dry final waste, which is a very valuable class, a biosolid that farmers will be happy to bring their own trucks, load them up, to fertilize their fields. One thing that got started, and I'm going to give a shout out to Alder Johnson here, who with her UWSP students did research and surveying, was a compost collection program. And we've got a pilot program going on now. I don't think Polly Dalton is here, but her farm, Rising Sand Organics, is partnering with the city on that. And then we've got variable frequency drives, and don't ask me to explain much more, other than they reduce power usage and they pump water very efficiently. We've got an unneeded water supply booster station, which has been decommissioned, saving us about $2,000 a month. And we've adopted a residential flat rate for water. And next slide, please. One of the things I was happy about, being a fan of gravel driveways, although I don't have one, is that we now permit gravel driveways as new construction, and if you have a gravel driveway, you can replace it with gravel. We do require that it has, there are some requirements so that the gravel doesn't spread, and this is a closer picture of the kind of underlayment that will hold a gravel driveway in, in place. And next, please. In terms of land use, we have a brownfield grant started in October 2018 to assess our infill development areas. The parks plan includes plans to gradually acquire some properties on the edge of Buchholz, so we can expand. The comprehensive plan is in progress, and I think we're pretty much there, almost, sort of. Oh, we've been working all year. That is a complicated project. Also in progress is the downtown and north division Main Street Master Plan, and I know we had a great attendance at the community input session. We've initiated some grants so that homeowners can get some assistance fixing up their properties. And I've had a couple of great visits with our GIS map specialist, who's been on board now for several months, and she is helping us map brownfields, impaved areas, et cetera. Okay, next slide. So the next step, again, the Green Tier Program enables us to set our own goals, and it's important for motivation to set short-term goals. Eventually, you want to reach that big goal of, you know, no fossil fuel usage or whatever, and we know that's very important. But shorter-term goals are very motivation, motivational, because they're feasible and they're realistic. So the mayor and Alder Shore and I have discussed, and I'm sure the mayor has discussed it with department heads as well, that this year, we're going to focus on fossil, fossil fuel usage, both for buildings and for vehicles. So we've just begun collecting baseline data. That'll give us a baseline to judge how we're doing on it, and the baseline data will help set, help us set goals for reductions. So that's what's coming up in the future. And Melissa, one more slide. I took that picture in beautiful District Nine, and I'll leave you with Gaylord Nelson. The fate of the living planet is the most important issue facing humankind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll continue to work on our Green Tier Legacy Community initiatives. It's been an ongoing process, and I want to thank all the department heads, all of the Alders, and the members of the community that have helped us stay on that path. Item number six is a consent agenda. We have two people wishing to speak. John Holdridge.
I was interested in the presentation. I would announce that this summer, North Second Drive is going to be reconstructed, and there'll be four-foot pedestrian lanes on each side. There's a lot of people who come out of the city and come up into Hall to bike, walk, and jog. That's a major step for us. Our problem in Hall is, we don't have any sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, just for the record, and the people listening at home, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. John Holdridge, 710 Hoffmeister Drive, Stevens Point. I'm the chairperson of Towne Hall. I've been the chairperson for approximately 25 years, and I'm sure some people feel maybe too long, but I'm up for running again, and I don't have any opposition. But we've, I want to just comment a little bit. Am I limited to three minutes?
Yes, sir. We're a little bit flexible with that, as long as we stay on task.
Wonderful. Last time I was here, I was limited by the previous mayor.
We ask people to stick to three minutes.
I'm a low-vision person. Mike knows well about it. He's been extraordinarily kind to me and on other committees. I had a detached retina in my left eye, had six surgeries. That was my good eye. That's a blind eye. My right eye was out in California, and I detached retina, and I was fortunate to get to a retinologist in Santa Barbara. So I still have some vision, but I don't drive. The only thing I drive is a grocery cart when my wife and I go shopping. And we were up at Triggs on Saturday. My wife puts her purse in the cart, and of course, she wants me to always watch her purse, but I've become very cautious about going around corners in the aisles, because I'm somewhat reckless with the grocery cart, and I see others that are somewhat reckless too. But I'm low-vision, but I get along. I called up this morning, my, I'm a veteran, and my wife called the VA to get some medication. I get it from Toma, and discovered they were closed. It's President's Day, and I keep thinking...
Mr. Chairman, could we please get back on task?
Okay. I was just, can I say something about Hall?
You said a little bit.
Well, Hall is the third-largest municipality in Portage County. It has a staff of four full-time road crew members, two administrative clerical personnel, no real executive. The executive is myself. Our budget is about $2 million a year. Yours is about $24 million. So that's all. Now, let me comment on Well 11, because that's part of the discussion here. Well 11 caused great harm to Hall people when it was put in. There were 27 citizens who lost water, and they ended up getting approximately $80,000. They never got fully reimbursed. And the city ended up paying Hall about $47,000, and that was negotiated between the lawyers and so forth. So Well 11 is very important to us, but our, our reaction to Well 11 has become, because of the damages done to Hall private wells. I have a letter that, the town board met today at 1:00, and I understand the policy, Mayor, on not laying things on the table. But we met, and I wanted to have the authority of the town board in terms of what we're trying to do tonight. And so if I could just read this letter, it's not very long. Please. Okay, this is to Mayor Wiesa and Alder persons. The Hall Board of Supervisors met on Monday, February 18, 2000, at 1:00 p.m. to consider Stevens Point's purchase of approximately 58 acres of Towne Hall land. That's the Kyle Cluck property. Following discussion, the Hall Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to request that. Mayor Wiesa and the Stevens Point Common Council postponed the purchase of the Cluck land and appoint representatives from Stevens Point to meet with representatives from the Towne of Hall prior to any common council decision on buying the Cluck property. Last paragraph, in short, there are a number of issues and unanswered questions that need to be addressed before Stevens Point goes forward with the land purchase. The meeting might be the first step in developing a boundary agreement between the two municipalities for the future. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, John Holdridge, Town Chairman. That was just passed this afternoon, and we have letters for all of you, and maybe we can mail them to you, so you're aware of them. Now, the next, that's the letter to the mayor. I want to react to something that got us going. And that, and I've got larger print here. This is a big help. This is a memo from Joe Limpke to the Plan Commission dated January 30th, 2019. Joe has an introductory paragraph, then he says, this was, he was referring to the action of planning. He said, "Following this action, we have worked with the developer, the county, and the Towne of Hall on trying to find a solution that would allow the development of land in a way that would, that does not adversely impact Well 11's facility and the rest of the downstream interests." These talks have led to, to no development solution that are agreeable to the city and the developer. We have not been consulted by the city on, as Mr. Limpke indicates here. I think Joel was out, we had a, we had a public meeting of our Plan Commission back in January of 2018. We had a big crowd there. Joe was there, made a little presentation, admitted that he couldn't make policy decisions. We had a much smaller meeting, and I believe it preceded it. It was organized by the county, in which Mike Ostrowski and Joel were there, as was Jeff Schuler and some others. And we discussed, and I remember Mike, when he was going out, said that the city would implement the extraterritorial provisions, and I think that's the first time that the city has done that. So we're saying that we, that the Towne of Hall has not been consulted by the city. They've worked with Kyle Cluck, and we've gotten some information from Kyle Cluck. There may be incidental contact with other Hall supervisors and others, but it has been no contact with myself, the vice chairman of the Plan Commission, which is Bob Enright behind me, or the Plan Commission. That's our concern. We need to talk about these things. And then, as I conclude this, we, shortly after Well 11, the town board created a Hall Water Committee. We have nine people on it. We are instituting a program to develop monitoring wells around Hall. Some of those, we'll be able to use some of the Hall, some of the Stevens Point wells, since they were put in to monitor Well 11, but others we will create. We've created at least four. We had one incident. It was a big incident. North of Jordan Road, just attached to the strike in Emerald Forest subdivision, there was 80 acres of land, and the owner of that clear-cut the land and got permission to put in a high-capacity well. We immediately worked with the citizens along the borders of that land, and we have four citizens that we're collecting data quarterly on, to monitor that, what's going on in that land. So far, the owner hasn't developed it all, but that was a concern to all of us. Okay. So what's the request we're making tonight? It is to delay the purchase, the offer to purchase of the Cluck land until the two Plan Commissions, or whoever the mayor suggests, and we would certainly cooperate in signing people, drawing some kind of joint committee, and look at that, and that may well lead to further, further boundary questions. Now, Mike and I have talked about boundary issues ever since he got elected, and probably before that, but we've never done anything with it. We've had some minor discussions, but nothing's happened. So thank you for your time, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Bob Enright?
Good evening, Mayor and Alders. I'm Bob Enright, 5753 Algoma Street, Towne of Hall. I'm also a member of the Towne of Hall Plan Commission, and I was inspired by something that I read in the Administrative Staff Report on... that I read in the Administrative Staff Report on the City of Stevens Point denial of the plat review for the Cluck property. And I'll just take a moment to read it. It's on page five of that report, and it says, "Again, the city stands willing to work with the Town of Hall to achieve boundary-related concerns so that development can happen in a more sustainable form that benefits all parties and that the quality of groundwater is not compromised." I was inspired by this, and this is exactly what I think that we should be doing, that is to take this opportunity to do what we should have been doing for a number of years and have the two municipalities come together with an understanding of what our objectives are. For one, I think that we care just as much about water as you do, and this is a good point of departure. And creating boundary agreements, just to begin with the understanding of what is in Stevens Point's interest, what is in the Town of Hall's interest, and instead of either ignoring each other or talking past each other, why don't we hear what each other has to say, and possibly we could find that both of us have something to contribute here. To put just shortly in, in context here, the Town of Hall Board approved the subdivision plat for the Kyle Cluck property. It was denied in the document that I just read you a short excerpt from. The next, the Plan Commission heard about this was that Kyle came with a new drawing that was done by Mr. Rettler, I believe, that showed a new design for this area. Main reason for the denial of the plat initially was that it had too many septic systems on that plot of land, but the new one that Kyle Cluck came in had the same number of septic systems. So this was a little bit perplexing to the town. The other thing was that it was one piece of paper with a drawing on it, and the Town of Hall Plan Commission is accustomed to acting on recommendations or requests that go in tandem with some professional review from planning and zoning, because it's a citizens' commission, and we need professional assistance on that. We had nothing like that, so it was kind of like, some people said, you know, this has potential. They said that at the meeting. Some people had some skepticism, but it was more like, well, what are we supposed to do with this? I mean, what are our personal opinions on this? But that's not a responsibility to the Town of Hall. So that sort of, well, Kyle, okay, when you've got this in paper, elaborated, then we'll look at it again. The next we heard, actually quite indirectly, was that the city was planning to purchase the property. And I just think that we could do, you know, open up communication. What does the city have as an interest? What is it that you would like the town to do, and what can we contribute? And if we work in this way, maybe we can actually come to some final agreement. I understand that the original plat that Kyle Cluck had looked like to you like it interfered with your development plans. Well, a purchase of this property might interfere with us. We're not really sure what your intentions are. And so essentially, what I'm asking is that you postpone action on approving this, form a committee, representatives from the city, meet with representatives from the Towne Hall, and see if we can work something out that's not going to cost you over half a million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. With that, the speaker's list is exhausted. The consent agenda items are before you. Alder Niebon?
I would like to request that we pull item 11 for more discussion from the consent agenda. Do I need to make that as a motion?
Yes.
I would move to pull item 11 from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Actually, Alder, if everybody else is okay with it, typically, we would say, if you're okay with everything else, move approval of the consent agenda items with item number 11 pulled for further discussion. That is more appropriate.
Alder Person, we would need you to specify which number 11 you're referring to. There's more than one.
Oh, yeah. Plan Commission, item number 11.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, Plan Commission.
I see. Action of the Plan Commission. Gotcha. For, so, okay, so I'd move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of pulling item 11 for further consideration.
Item number 11 from the Plan Commission?
From the Plan Commission meeting of February 4, 2019, for further consideration.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? A second by Alder Person Dugan. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry. Do we need a roll call on that? We do. Sorry. It was unanimous. I think we're okay with doing that. Is that correct, Logan? Since it was a unanimous vote, can we just call it a roll call with unanimous?
You can't call it a roll call. It wasn't a roll call.
Do we need a roll call?
I don't believe we do. I think typically what, when we prepare the consent agenda, we specifically design it so that there's nothing in there that requires a roll call.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry. Got a little confusing there for a little while. All right. That is approved. Item number 11 from the Plan Commission meeting of February 4 is before you. Before we get started, Alder Niebon, you pulled it, so I will give you the floor.
I really don't see any harm in waiting a month or so to purchase this property. I think the folks from Hall make a very good argument for the two municipalities to sit down and see what we could come up with together. I think what benefits us will benefit Hall. What benefits Hall will benefit us. We're all in this together in the end, really. As Commissioner Enright said, there is concern about water quality as we are. So I think giving the two municipalities an opportunity to look at the property and come up with something, or not waiting a month, I don't think would be that big of an issue.
Okay. Alder Dugan?
I seconded it because I pretty much agree with everything that Alder Niebon has said. And further, it could be the first step towards developing a really good boundary agreement. And much of District 8 is bordered by Hall, and I have a number of constituent issues with where those borders come together. And I think it would be great to be able to have good conversations with Hall, and this is a, this is a good place to start. It's a good place to explain how we deal with water and what's important to our drinking water, and how all of the countryside deals with water, because much of their water is compromised by ag. So there's just a lot for us to share, I think, and we can start here. I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that people will agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Morrow?
I like what Mr. Holdridge was saying, but I also remember from the meetings that we've had that there've been ongoing talks about this for months. And please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I believe that you and Kyle and others have reached, have tried to reach out to try to make some other type of a, to try to make some, try to make some kind of a plan. I know there was plans to extend city, to extend, extend the city's water sewer out there as well, to try to make, perhaps make the lot smaller. That would make, that would enable Mr. Cluck to make more money, to try to work things out. But from my understanding is those talks didn't really work out for whatever reason I'm not really aware of. So I'm not really sure what some of the other issues are. I've been trying to find out what some, what some of the issues are, but I haven't been able to find out as of yet, because I know that the city's been trying to work with Cluck and with Hall as well.
Okay. Let me, let me try and clear up a few things. First of all, the, the boundary agreement that's been in discussions with Chairman Holdridge and myself, the Towne Hall and the City of Stevens Point, have literally gone on for, for a couple of years. Every time an issue comes up, whether it's Well 11 or an annexation, the, the issue of boundary agreements comes up, and we're, we're always ready to talk about those. I think there's probably some fault on both sides, but then the issue goes away until the next thing comes along. And it seems to be one of these recurring themes. The Director, Limpke, and Estruski have attended meetings in the Towne Hall in an attempt to answer any questions that those Hall residents have. I personally, outside of work, have gotten contacted by Hall residents saying, "The city's trying to force us to annex. The city is going to force us to get on sewer and water," and those things are simply not true. I don't know where that information came from, but that's what their understanding was. Most recently, even Friday, I was on the phone with Chairman Holdridge and a couple of members of his board answering those questions. This is not going to be an annexation. State law prohibits that because it's not continuous. There is no umbilical cord or line to connect it to the City of Stevens Point. This isn't unusual to have one municipality own property and another. The Town of Hall owns property in the City of Stevens Point. We didn't ask for a boundary agreement when that happened. We accepted it. This, as Director Limpke had said, and we're at a bit of a disadvantage here because Director Limpke isn't available today, but Director Limpke has made his thoughts pretty clear on this. This is to protect the interests of Stevens Point residents' drinking water, and those in the Towne Hall as well, but first and foremost, our citizens. The boundary agreements, the city stands ready to work on those at any time. We can all get to the table, but this particular decision has nothing to do with the boundary agreement. Thank you. Alder Jennings?
For the two years I've been Alder, and even before that, I've been bothered by the tense relationship between the city and Towne of Hall, the inability to collaborate, the inability to communicate. Instead, there is suspicion and bad faith. And I'm not surprised when people in Hall feel like the city is engaged in, in land grabs. I understand that. So it is confusing, because one side says one thing, and the other side says, well, they didn't say that, or they did say that, or we said this. And it becomes very difficult to make any kind of informed decision, because the two sides not only don't collaborate, but don't say the same thing. So it would just be a lot better if the city, everybody was thinking in a more regional way and being able to have regional discussions.
Thank you.
If I can make some comments at some point, too. If I can make some comment.
Absolutely. Attorney Beverage?
So I see the attorney that represents Mr. Cluck here is tonight, and I think certainly he and I could both agree that city staff and Mr. Cluck met and worked in good faith to try to come up with a layout for that area that would satisfy everybody's goals. And it, there's a little more nuance to the city's interests here than just preventing there being septic systems installed. It's more a matter of not having the layout of it be created in a way that would preclude utilities ever being extended into it. And the, the layout that was originally presented had such large lots, didn't have any right-of-way reserved, and basically created a subdivision that it would never be economically feasible to extend utilities, because you just don't have enough potential customers per foot of pipe that you have to put in the ground. So we, we worked with Mr. Cluck and his attorney to come up with a layout that would satisfy both his interests as a developer, trying to make a profit on an investment, and also create some flexibility for that to occur in the future. Now, what ended up happening is we came to an agreement on a layout and, and then found, found out that it was not legal from a zoning perspective in terms of some finer details of state code as relates to a certain program for exceptions, to lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera. And that's when we started re-engaging with Mr. Cluck with regards to acquiring the property. Now, I think a very crucial element here is that this is being acquired by our Utilities Division. It's being acquired using utility dollars that are generated from the ratepayers. And I heard one, at least one comment saying, "We don't know what the city's intent is for this." Well, I can tell you one thing. If we use it for anything other than wellhead protection, the Public Utilities Commission is probably going to have a real stern talking to with us, considering that we use ratepayer money, or intending to use ratepayer money to purchase it. So that being said, the public, or the Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners did approve the purchase, and the Plan Commission approved it as well. And in short, the Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners has the authority to use their capital money to make that purchase, independent of any approval by the council. So it's listed in the consent agenda as an item that appeared on their agenda, but ultimately, it's, it's not before you to give an up or down vote on it tonight. It was a utility matter, the same way that making investments in their plant, or, you know, in any number of other wellhead protection purchases we've made over the years, such as the one on Wilshire near the Green Circle Trail that happened a number of years back. So certainly, having a discussion on it tonight is well within bounds, but just be advised that there's not really an ability for you to vote this down here at this meeting tonight.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Sorry, Mr. Enright, we're out of the council discussion now. Thank you. Alder Phillips?
I started on the council in 1995, and we were talking way back then about having boundary discussions, and nothing's ever happened. It needs to happen. I don't think by purchasing this piece of property is going to hold it up at all. We just need to get together and do it. We have no intentions or plans to do anything with this property, so we have plenty of time to talk with the Towne Hall about, about what's happening out there. That's why I think, and I'd like to make a motion, to request Public Utilities to purchase that property. And I can do that because it was pulled from the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Alder Slawinski. Further discussion? Hearing, President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I need one clarification. So for Attorney Beverage, the Sewer and Water Commission has statutory authority, is, am I understanding that correctly, to use their funds to achieve their mission, which is part of that would be wellhead protection? Is that, my understanding, correct?
That's correct, and specifically, the statute you'd want to look at for that is Chapter 66, Section 0805. I can read the pertinent part here. It says, "The governing body of a village or town may provide for the nonpartisan management of a municipal public utility by creating a commission under this section," which obviously Stevens Point has. "The Board of Commissioners, under the general control and general control and supervision of the governing body, shall be responsible for the entire management of and shall supervise the operation of the utility." So the same way that you have the Police and Fire Commission with a great deal of independent authority to take the political sort of tinge out of police and fire operations, that's sort of the role that the Public Utilities, or, excuse me, Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners serves with regards to those systems.
Thank you.
Okay. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. So picking up on that points, those points then, the, the decision's already been taken, and whatever vote happens here doesn't affect it.
That's my understanding?
Change for us to act on something where we're not actually.
You would be making a recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that is my understanding, and certainly, though, if I am wrong, then whatever vote you take right now will have the effect that the majority of you intend it to have.
Alder Phillips?
I guess seeing the motions on the floor to purchase the property, one other thing, it's, it's part of our jobs as council members to protect in every shape or form we can our water supply for the city, and that's most important. If we don't do this, I can see we could have some harm.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, the motion is to make a recommendation to the Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners to purchase the property outlined in Plan Commission, minute item 11. And the clerk will call a roll. Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dugan?
No.
McComb?
Um, aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
9-1. 9-1, that is adopted. Item number seven is on page 60 of your packets, and that is a preliminary resolution for special assessments, the installation of water services, Project 19-01. Director Badun. Director Badun, did Director Lemke give you any comments to make in regards to this?
No, he didn't give me anything to do with that. Just the, I'm not sure, I don't even recall how many there potentially are. I'm not sure there are any that will be assessed actually in the end.
It is a preliminary resolution for installation of services regarding Reserve Street primarily, installation of water laterals, and so forth. So we'd be looking for a motion to accept the preliminary resolution. President Johnson? Director, do you have something to add, or you just gotcha? President Johnson?
Traffic. Yeah. Motion to approve the preliminary resolution related to the special assessments on Reserve.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Morrow?
Correct.
Okay, discussion there? Hearing none. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Excuse me, item number eight on page 62 is a prelimi, yeah, preliminary resolution for special assessments for the installation of water services, installation of sanitary sewer laterals, and the installation of storm sewer laterals, and the installation of sidewalks, project 19-07. As you can see, we're looking at water, sewer, and storm sewer, and sidewalks for the Third Street, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Meadow Street, Pulaski Place, and Sixth Avenue for the sidewalks. Director, I believe these are for the reconstruct?
Yes, this is the North Side Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Alder Jennings?
I move to approve project number 19-07.
Thank you. Is that a second, Alder Phillips?
Yes, yes.
Okay, seconded by Alder Person Phillips. Discussion there? Alder Jennings?
I just want to say that I have constituents in this area that will be very, that are very happy about this. I have had conversations with both the Director of Public Works and Director of Utilities about the drainage problems we have in that area, and I've been able to inform some of the residents about changes coming forward, and they're very excited about that, so.
Cool. Great. Okay, if you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and... Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number nine is on page 65 of your packets. That also is a preliminary resolution for special assessments regarding the installation of sidewalks, project 19-08. That's for Woodland Street, Amber Avenue, and Windy Avenue. Alder Niebone?
I would move approval of sidewalk project 1908 in the wonderful District 7.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Shore. Discussion there? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll? Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 10 is on page 67 of your packet, and that is an ordinance amendment regarding traffic, Section 9.05 sub AK and AL, parking citations on posted private property. Attorney, do you have any comments on that?
I'll just stand ready to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Alder Slawinski?
Move approval of that stated ordinance amendment?
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Nabel. Discussion there? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. On page 68, you will see item number 11. That is an ordinance amendment regarding zoning to rezone 1017 Third Street from B2 Central Business Transition District to PD Plan Development District. We do have Brent Jacobson who wished to speak. Mr. Jacobson, you have the floor. You have three minutes. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brent Jacobson, 1257 Main Street here in the city of Stevens Point. I'm with the Anderson O'Brien Law Firm. Our firm represents the Guzman Building. Guzman Building LLC has a property located adjacent, the property being considered for rezoning or part of it. And the council members may or may not have received, I did submit, Mr. Mayor, a written submission to be disseminated. So if you have that, thank you. I hope you had an opportunity to review it. Obviously, time doesn't allow me to go through all of that. I'm not going to. The written submission did include, as an exhibit, a letter from our client, which was submitted for dissemination to the Plan Commission. I understand that was also disseminated to the Plan Commission based on the time it was received. It wasn't able to be included in your meeting packets if you're on the Plan Commission. I also am not going to go through and read that letter aloud, as I don't have time to. I just want to bullet point some of the concerns that are raised by Mr. Guzman in his submission, and I would encourage you to read that again if you have already. Some of those that he mentions, for instance, are the dispersal of snow and some of the locations that's planned to be dispersed, particularly issues with Center Point Drive. He has some concerns about parallel parking there. One of his biggest concerns, I believe, that is highlighted in the write-up is the proximity of building number three, I believe it is, to his building. As I understand it, from reviewing the plans, it'll be about a five-foot separation between his property and building number three. And I just do want you folks to consider how close that really is. Thanks to the tiles on the floor tonight, those appear to be about a foot. So a step-five tiles away, and that's what some of the residents in his building are going to be looking at out their window, based on how close and proximity that building is slated to be put up there. Based on the fire codes and how close it is, he may be looking at a stone wall. Maybe that's up for some further design. I don't know. But that is something that he is concerned about. Parking is also, obviously, consideration of his. I know this is budgeted for about 117 stalls was the count somewhere in that neighborhood. There are, as I understand it, 200-plus units alone for living on the property. You know, if you take one and a half cars on average for each of those 211 folks that are fully occupying those units, I mean, you're looking at influxing over 300-some cars into there in that area, so I know that is a concern of his. Some other things are mentioned there I encourage you to consider, including stormwater management. And then, is that my timer, Mr. Mayor? I'll wrap it up.
Yes, sir.
I'll wrap it up right now. And then also, I do highlight in my letter, what he'd really like is just to just go back to the Planning Commission and have his comments read aloud, so that other members of the public who are there may bring a thought to their minds, so they can comment on it. It's also an opportunity for the Plan Commission to consider it further, because it is their job, as you know, to give a recommendation to this body. I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity. Outside of my regular job as an attorney, I serve as mayor of the city of Moesneev, so I know the position that all you folks are in when you get an exciting project that lands on your doorstep. And thank you for allowing members of your public to do this. Not every city council has common period opportunity as on every agenda item, so I think that's very neat, and I may adopt that. Thank you.
Thank you. The speaker's list is exhausted. Director, do you have any comments you wanted to add?
In regards to the Plan Development District zoning, it allows for certain deviations to take place, and really, there are four small deviations that were requested through the Plan Commission, two of which were near the Guzman property, and they were for the setback relating to the parking lot, which would be north of his building, to be reduced from a five-foot setback to a three-and-a-half-foot setback because of, with, in order to get an additional row of parking. We felt that was appropriate, also considering Mr. Guzman asked for a similar type concession several years ago relating to his parking lot when it was reconstructed. The two other concessions or deviations that they're looking at are on the southwest corner on Third and Center Point, just because the way that the angle of the property goes, they may encroach within that area slightly. I did speak with the architect relating to the project. I know this comment came up regarding the neighbor across on Portage Street about it being a three-foot setback. They are willing to move that building down an additional two feet to hit the five-foot setback, so that should not be a problem with that. In terms of the other stuff, the heights of the buildings, the use of the property, the setback from the Guzman property line, those would all be met under underlying zoning district. So they're not asking for exceptions to that. They will need to meet proper building code and fire code regulations, but if someone wanted to build a building there with the current B2 zoning, they could do so, five feet from that property line. So those are the deviations that were being requested. We felt the staff there are very minimal. Parking standards, there are no parking requirements within this district, so they could have zero parking if used at all. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
As long as he's up here, do any of the Alders have questions for the director? Alder Dugan?
Yes, Director Ostrowski. I'm wondering if, even though it's not necessary, I mean legally necessary or required, do you think the architect would entertain the idea of adjusting building three so that the tenants of the Guzman building won't be smack against a wall? And I think he said there are 10 different windows along there, so quite a few tenants would be looking out at that. Do you think it would be possible?
So I think we can work with the architect to see if they're willing to slide that building over to the west, keeping in mind with the Guzman building, too, while there are windows on that side, this building only covers about half of that building. So it isn't that the entire, if you look at the site plan, this building's width is about half of the width of the Guzman building, so not all of those windows in full facade is going to be covered, but we can work with the architect to see if that will adjust, if we can adjust it any further to the west.
I was going to mention the 933 Portage, but I'm glad you did. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the director before we excuse him? Okay, thank you. Alder Jennings?
I'd like to move approval to rezone 1017 Third Street from B2 Central Business Transition District to a Plan Development District.
Thank you. Seconded by President Johnson. Further discussion? Hearing, Alder McComb?
I was at the Plan Commission meeting. Did the Plan Commission members receive the letter before the Plan Commission?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And I remember the reference to the letter.
You did.
Yep. We handed it out. It is now also part of the record, so if any members of the public wish to see that...
And I've seen it in the record.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 12 is on page 76 of your packet. That is a resolution for a conditional use permit to construct apartments in multiple buildings at 1017 Third Street. Mr. Jacobson, you signed up for this one, too. Anything to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just ask that my same comments, I think, are relevant and carry over. I ask that they be considered for number 12 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Eschenbach?
Hi there. Noah Eschenbach, 10115 Yellow Brick Road in Amherst. Not sure if everyone knows me. I've been at council meetings for probably 15 years now. We have owned apartments in the city of Stevens Point for that amount of time. I've been recently the president of the Apartment Association for the last three years. I've worked with several of you. Also, not everyone knows this, I actually lived in the city of Stevens Point for 12 years. We recently moved out to Amherst, but have been very committed to the city, both living here. Again, we own a good amount of property in town, and as a real estate agent, I work and sell 40, 50 homes a year to people. So I'm committed to the city of Stevens Point. I know when we come here and speak, we're often perceived just as apartment owners, and that's where our testimony ends, but I'm really up here beyond that scope. I have a pretty good input, I feel like, from multiple different approaches on some of these topics. I have some real concerns with this project. I would ask that the Alders kind of step back and look at the big picture of this project. The developer himself is telling you that it is not a feasible project. If it was feasible, he wouldn't be asking for $3 million of city money on top of $2.5 million from the TIF district. If you figure out that $3 million is 15% of the project cost, combine that with federal tax credits, and he'll actually probably be walking out of closing with money in his pocket. They will have no money into this project of their own. The city will, so you guys are going to have $3 million tied up in this banking on this working. He won't. He can turn around and sell it the next day and come out ahead. You guys will be stuck holding the bag like we were with pretty much every other TIF in the city. Go through some other things. Has anyone questioned what rents are going to be here? That's, you're financing high-end apartments. These are not what the majority of this city is looking for currently. I know that our housing study cited some differences. I would love to see what a housing study would look like now. We have lost 25% of our student population. They're forecasting another 20% loss in the next seven years. That's 4,000 to 5,000 bodies. I just sat through the downtown planning meeting that a couple of you were at. Stevens Point's population hasn't changed in 10 years. We've already approved 300 new units or so. We're looking at another 200 units. I don't know where these bodies are going to come from. I don't think the developer knows where these bodies are coming from. He's not too worried about it. He doesn't have any money into this. If I was a developer, I'd be doing the same thing. Great, give me all the money. I'll build this, turn around and sell it in five years. After the first few years of a building like that, it's no longer new. It's no longer as desirable. There's going to be some major, long-term problems with this project that we aren't realizing because everyone's so impressed by, this is the biggest project we've gotten down here. This project is not feasible. The developer's telling you that by asking for that $3 million. I'd be all for it. If this project worked on its own, great, let's approve it and move forward. It doesn't work on its own, and I don't understand why we're looking at throwing $3 million For those of you in student housing districts, I know we've talked about changing the occupancy zoning. I don't get why that is tied to one parking space per tenant, when those aren't the same criteria we're holding some of these projects to. I must be renting to different tenants. It's a whole different world, apparently, because every one of my tenants has a vehicle. We rent over two hundred and fifty tenants, all but four of them have cars. This project is going to have major problems for businesses in the area. I know that there's adjacent parking. We own some buildings downtown. If parking's not onsite, tenants aren't going to park there. They're going to park as close as they can. They're not hauling groceries three blocks in the middle of winter, parking in the available city lots that are empty because of their location to downtown. It's not that there's not a demand for parking downtown. Those lots are empty because of their location and proximity to major city developments. I guess my time's up. I'm not going to carry on too much. I just, again, ask that all of you take a step back, look at this, and look who's going to end up holding the bag when this doesn't rent. There are a lot of major questions to be asked, and I'd ask that you guys step back and ask those tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Lyszewski?
Before you begin my time, did I hear you say the public has three minutes to speak?
That's typically what is allowed, that we always go a little bit further than that, as long as people are staying on topic, you know that.
At three was for none of the agenda previously, and on the agenda, it says five minutes for public speaking for the agenda items. But anyway, I just have four minutes. I just wanted to, I'm trying not to rush through like I usually do, but...
We're pretty liberal, as you know, Mary Ann.
Okay, real good. Thank you for your understanding.
As long as we're continuing to talk about it, we don't get a history of the ton of hall.
Yeah. Mary Ann Lyszewski, twelve oh nine Wisconsin Street. I too am concerned that Slingshot is proposing a development that will attempt to rent to over a hundred tenants in our community who do not have a car or who are able to navigate parking off-site. Even in Madison, with the extensive on-street bike lanes that they have, they only have five percent of their population who are dedicated all-weather bicyclists. A recent meeting at Midstate of a hundred and twenty local citizens polled that eighty-eight percent drove to the meeting, and a show of hands tonight, I trust, would be similar. Reasons given for such reduced parking are: preserving green space, preferring to place people over cars, the ill effect of cars on health, wasting the cost of parking for a falsely perceived need, creating a more comfortable and safe place to live. Do we have up to a hundred empty parking spaces to fill this need? The Portessi Light Lot has the wanta development planned for it. The Crosby Lot is heavily used for public gatherings at Pifner Park from spring through fall. Parking surrounding Cobblestone, Great Lakes, and Midstate is almost always filled to capacity with an average of fifteen open spaces. The Shopko Lot has commitments to Associated Bank and any future tenant. The Library Lot is out of the question. The Water Street Lot has a senior complex planned and a reserved-only parking lot on Water Street. Asking tenants to park more than two blocks away would be a serious business gamble. And even with only fifty new tenants in these lots, how many lots will the tenants need to circle to find a parking space every day? And as for, quote, "creating a safe, more comfortable place to live," there is a certain amount of danger in walking after dark, of walking on lots of ice, lots that have ice and snow and rain, of carrying groceries, shopping, children, for blocks, for everyone, though especially at night for women, late-shift workers, and the elderly. Are there any guest parking spaces for two hundred and eleven units, likely two hundred and fifty tenants if you have couples in an apartment? Or will guests also need to find off-site parking? Portage Street has a few spaces, and Portage residents will rightly object if their street is taken over. We and the developer need a more specific answer to where everyone will park, rather than repeatedly hearing, quote, "there is a lot of downtown parking," unquote. How will snow plowing and sweeping of the city parking lots and the seventeen parallel parking spaces on Center Point be accomplished when there are up to a hundred scattered vehicles on these sites twenty-four-seven? This plan is so desperate for parking that the unprecedented request of seventeen spaces on Seven Center Point Drive has never before been done for anyone or anywhere else in the city. Parallel parking on Center Point will be dangerous, as vehicles need to stop and back up. How do we refuse the inevitable future requests of residents who want twenty-four-hour on-street parking in their neighborhoods or for their businesses? The many concessions to accommodate the developer are ignoring standards we set up to provide consistency and aesthetic appeal throughout our city. The project analysis does not include that a setback variance won't be put, will put a building within, as has been mentioned earlier, will put a building within four feet of the Guzman property. His tenants will see, of course, as we heard, the blank wall four feet from their windows going up fifty-four feet, blocking out sun and light. I believe you can't even safely lean a ladder out enough in four feet to maintain the west side of Guzman's building. Is this so necessary, and will this impact the sale that he has currently for his property? Finally, is the stormwater plan that's being proposed addressing how the neighbors know from experience that the storm sewer will not handle water from two-thirds of this lot? Are there snow storage plans? Is the lullaby lot part of the incentives? How much onsite management will be provided for such a highly mixed-use complex? If the first phase uses up all of the onsite parking spaces, what happens to phase two? I'm almost done. This is yet one more example of squeezing in as high and as many units, asking for removal of four important setback standards, and for the very first time, using our city land and street for a developer's needs in order to maximize his greatest return. We can't make a decision just so we can say the lullaby site is finally developed. If we only focus on new tax base as our goal and not on filling enough of these apartments, new taxes may not come. And if we overbuild existing, if we overbuild apartments, existing landlords may also not meet their tax payments, as they have vacancies. We need to look at the very permanent impact of this proposal and concessions to standards that have long given order, safety, and beauty to our community. Please provide us with some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. With that, the speaker's list is exhausted. I'll bring it back to the council. What are your wishes? Oh, sorry. Attorney Beveridge would like to address the council.
So just real quick, the comments from Mr. Eschenbach regarding the potential of the developer selling the property to somebody else, that's an excellent concern, which is why we wrote a provision into the agreement to address it. Specifically, that would be section nine point one-two, titled, I believe, Assignment. It states that the developer can assign their rights to another entity so long as that entity consists of the same owners as developer, and such transferee agrees to be bound by the same provisions as contained in the agreement, as if they were an original signatory thereto. They can also assign the rights and the obligation to an entity owned and controlled by the developer, an entity owned or controlled by any member of the developer, or an entity affiliated with the developer by commonality of ownership of at least fifty percent. So essentially, they got skin in the game, long-term. So you can rest assured on that.
Well, and so the other thing I want to talk to, because we're dealing with that a little later, but there were some comments made about, you know, the city left, being left holding the bag on these projects. Even some people on social media were making comments that if it goes belly up, we're on the hook for it. Can you just talk a little bit about, because you've worked with the developer's agreement, talk a little bit about how we protect the interest of the taxpayers in these developer agreements?
Sure. We discussed that in fairly good length at the Finance Committee, but obviously, not everyone here in the gallery and not everybody watching at home would have seen that. So if you look specifically to section or article four of the development, it states under section six of that, for tax year twenty, two thousand twenty-two and thereafter, ending with the last year of the term covered by the agreement, the developer has to guarantee TIF revenues, i.e. tax payments coming off the property, that are sufficient to cover the city's costs for the bonding, for the payment. The three million dollars that was referenced is only paid out to the developer upon completion of the building and issuance of an occupancy certification for it. So basically, they're guaranteeing that they're going to pay us what it takes for us to cover our costs. And if it falls short of that, for whatever reason, they have to make that up with a payment and just sort of, you know, cut us an additional check, independent of the actual tax payment. Moreover, they are, the three million dollars is prorated downward if they don't achieve the target value of the property. So if they come in with a value less than twenty-five million, that three million dollars gets scaled back proportionally. So the protections in here are pretty robust, and they are, in my opinion, sufficient to protect the city's financial interests.
Good. I just wanted to point that out, because it's not like we're, if someone can take the three million dollars and skip town, that doesn't happen. We didn't fall off the turnip cart yesterday. So we make sure and protect our interests to the best of our ability. Alders, what are your wishes?
Mayor, I'd like to have a comment.
Alder Morrow?
One of the other comments was the state concerns for the people who rent, that they'll have a place to also park. My understanding was that if you have a unit, that you're also supposed to have a spot there as well. And I believe if, I believe at some point, you also pay more for that spot. Is that correct?
That...
That's for covered parking?
No, they're not required to have a spot. As the Director mentioned earlier, in this particular zone, there are no parking requirements. This would be able to go in with zero parking spots. I don't agree with that part of it, but they are providing parking spots for their tenants. And as, if you remember, the developer had addressed the parking issue when they presented to us. President Johnson?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for ten seventeen Third Street.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Shore. Further discussion? Alder Shore?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a little bit of a particular perspective on the parking issues in a couple of ways. One is that I'm either one of, I'm either the only or certainly one of the very few members of the council who actually favors being more permissive about twenty-four-hour parking. So I certainly would be open to that, not just in one location, but throughout the But when Mary Ann mentioned the possible objections from neighbors on Portage Street, it made me think of Peck Street, where I live, where on our block, employees on St. Mike's Hospital park every day. And not only do I not personally really mind that, I mean, if we were in a really central and convenient location, I might, you know, I might want there to be a kiosk, but other than that, I don't mind being in a similar situation to what Mary Ann described. But more to the point, I've never heard a single complaint about that from any of my neighbors on our block.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and seconded to approve the conditional use permit to construct apartments in multiple buildings at ten seventeen Third Street. Are there any additional comments? Okay, hearing none. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number thirteen is on page eighty-eight of your packet, and that is a resolution for a conditional use permit to construct apartments on the property bounded by Center Point Drive, Third Street, Second Street, and Portage Street, with the addresses of ten thirteen and eleven zero five Second Street, nine forty-one Portage Street, and one thousand and ten sixteen Third Street, along with nine sixteen Center Point Drive, and several unaddressed parcels as listed in the agenda. Alder Nabel?
I would like to move to approve the resolution conditional use permit for constructing apartments on the property bounded by Center Point Drive, Third, Second Street, and Porter Street.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Dugan. Discussion there. Hearing none. All those, I'm sorry, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, no, and we'll have the clerk call that roll. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number fourteen is on page ninety-seven of your packet, and that is a development agreement with Merge LLC for ten seventeen Third Street. Any comments from the attorney or the Director before we bring it to council? I think you've heard a little bit about it. Alder Shore?
I move approval of the developer's agreement.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Jennings. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?